According to Stephen.
Okay, I will call this meeting of the select board to order. We're a couple of minutes late, we had some technical difficulties. Created a new teams meeting to record this. But we will go ahead and get started with the approval of minutes for the meeting from April 1st. Any comments or corrections to those minutes?
I thought they were very thorough, thank you.
There are no changes, I understand motion?
I'll make a motion to accept them in a, sorry, a few minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Those minutes are approved. Okay, moving on to board reports. Alex, would you like to start?
I would, but I have no boards to report on this meeting.
Yep, I also was, I was unable to attend the planning board, however, I believe John attended as the alternate.
I did attend, it was pretty interesting. There was some discussion about the couple of public meetings to discuss planning business and possible zoning changes. There was significant discussion about the Johnston Drive property. There was some concern amongst some board members that we did not present them with any information to speak of. And they felt that as a planning board, they needed that kind of information to make a reasonable decision. I did make a point that we, the selectmen, were unanimous in wishing to sell that property. And the recommendation of a very thoughtful committee recommended that we sell lot number three. The vote was five to two in favor, but I think the two noes do indicate to us as a board that we need to present the planning board with more information when we make this sort of request to them.
I can answer that, that I did talk with David Frack since then.
Yeah.
Work on it, I did have communication with him before asking what information he wanted.
Yeah.
I guess what was presented was not enough for some.
For some, yeah, yeah. And it could have been, you know, could have ended up as a four to three decision had had one of the alternates been on instead of somebody else. So it could be close.
Just a question, John, you mentioned three, did you mean six? The one, the small one on the corner?
The small one on the corner, isn't that lot three?
No.
Six.
Six. Oh, well, mathematics, never my strong suit, yes, okay.
Grayson?
No, the Energy Committee has, I gave a report last meeting of the one time we met, and we will not be meeting in April because we do not have a forum on people traveling. So our next meeting will be at the end of May, in which case I won't report until the beginning of June.
Conservation Commission met last Thursday, it was a very lively and long meeting. There was a discussion on dredging and Amy from, I think it was DES, came and gave her presentation. There was a look at the wetlands application that's also in your pocket tonight for, I'm gonna ruin, I think it's Rogue Galsby on Nancy's life. And a short presentation from Pathways on that. And then some public comment from the Maskoma Lake Association about water testing. And the majority of the business really, there was some continuing business. Majority of the business went around about this dredging piece and concerns about dredging and how silt from the stormwater is impacting our lakes. And, you know, I think we've, we visited as a board and I think it's a very important topic. There are people who have pretty clear vested personal interests. And then there are the more general interests that I think are probably important to address as a town because of natural resources concerns. So we'll certainly be revisiting that. The Conservation Commission also did not get, they didn't get any that I could see information on the Shed Street or Johnston Drive property discussions. So Shirley asked me and I was like, only that would have been forwarded to you. So I pulled up our packet because Whitney deserved a vacation and she got one. So I was lucky enough to be running the machine, pulled up our packet and just kind of went through. It was not the most smooth thing because my memory is not perfect. So I, we kind of took a quick run through. They were unanimous on supporting selling Shed Street. And they were unanimous on supporting selling Johnston Drive. But that being said, without that extra information that I pulled up, I think it would have gone nothing.
Did the DES person happen to have any suggestions on stormwater?
Yes, there's a lot, so most of it revolved around, there was, there were two members of Conservation who met with a different person from DES who were interested in dredging. And so the primary piece of her presentation was about dredging and actually the history of not dredging in New Hampshire. She did address some individual concerns and some of the suggestions she made were about how to get groups to collaborate, how to have stakeholders work with DPW, and then the availability of some grant funding, I think it's a 319, let me go up and look. I took some basic notes, but they're not good, this is why I'm not gonna take her. But anyways, she gave a suggestion on that, that there was some questions about whether or not an individual or homeowner's association would be allowed to apply or if it'd have to have sponsorship from something, an entity like the town. Because obviously the parties of interest are on Holly Drive and on Crystal Lake and the concern is that it's private property and not immediately adjacent to the road. The claim by Holly Drive residents, of course, is that we're putting water onto Holly Drive, which is, as I've continued to remind them, not the case. It's coming down all of those streams across their own parcel. And so some of the concern was, how do you avoid, you don't need to dredge. Like if you dredge and you don't do anything upstream, then you're just going to be in the same situation over and over. So really the focus was on what could you do to mitigate this before it hits the lake? And I think that's a really good question and something that Conservation really should be looking at. And I think there's a strong interest in that. We've worked with Soak Up the Rain, the folks from DES who do that program. And I think there's a lot of interest in teaching folks, enabling them, and maybe working on some grants. I think Ed Rippe asked me for the contact information, I'm like, no, I'm secretary. So I told him to go back to Shirley because I believe DES was gonna give her that information. So definitely something that I think will probably rise to a select board level if it is a larger project or teaching, but something we could all collaborate on.
Can you remind me exactly what, what they wish to dredge?
When the, you know, there's the series, if you look at the topographic map above Holly Drive, there's a series of many, many streams, it's almost like a little waterfall. And when it washed through and took out a leach field, a lot of the silt didn't have an opportunity to drop out along the way, it came right down the stream but it dropped into the lake. And so the, some of the homeowner, one homeowner who happens to be a member of Conservation has a personal interest in changing that area. There's obviously many reasons why, and I can actually get you a copy of the presentation. I'll send it to Ed to send around because it was very interesting. But basically, when you dredge, you obviously also disturb the lake bottom, plant life, and you agree, other problems. So it was very interesting. It's, it's not an easy fix, certainly, I think we know that. But really getting to the heart of the problem and looking at some root cause work rather than treating the outcome, I think is where I felt like the most of the committee was headed. Not everybody's on board, so I don't want to speak for the committee, but.
Yeah, I'd love to read that because I think this is going to be an ongoing issue.
Yeah, yep, absolutely. And there are a lot of things that folks could be doing uphill on their own property. I gave, I picked on myself as an example, right? I cast water across my own property into the woods where I have like rock barriers and dams so that there's siltation ponds, so the sediment drops out before the water comes up and flows through. Because otherwise, my water would go to Gulf Brook, to Indian River, to Maskoma River, to Maskoma Lake. So, you know, we all, it all flows downhill, I happen to be at a high point, and I think we all can contribute. So we also talked about doing some, they had a really great time doing the farmer's market last year, doing some education pieces, so they are going to be doing at least one farmer's market, possibly two. So it's a great opportunity to engage folks and, you know, help them understand how they can help us keep the lake safe. But also, you know, we want to make sure we're not washing out our roads because it's very, very expensive.
That might be a presentation that the planning board would also be interested in seeing because they've had discussions around, are there things that can be done on the planning side?
I think absolutely.
So.
For stormwater?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was gonna say, the presentation given, she may have talked about stormwater, I have the slides, but it was, it was about dredging and what that does to the lake.
But soak, soak up the rain.
Yeah, anyway, any stormwater stuff would certainly be worth spreading out as well.
And then we have a short pause, kind of, we had originally planned to do some work on Soak Up the Rain. The timeline for that has changed due to some personal circumstances and, and other stars not aligning. But the goal is to have, there's a separate like ad hoc committee that was looking at possibly doing an installation. We looked at Lakeside Park, you know, renewing that pond. So getting any of that information, I can make sure it comes forward to you guys and the planning.
Yeah, we can.
Maybe we can make a point.
We can actually do a little research on getting you guys some stormwater here.
Yeah. Dave, did I see where you had?
There was mention about Johnston Drive, presuming that you're talking about just that one lot.
She was just reporting that the Conservation Commission had discussed it during their meeting.
But voted for, yeah, didn't specify which lot.
Yeah, yes, the one lot that we were, that's on.
The request that went forward to the agenda is all about that one lot.
Yeah, you're correct, David. All right, anything else for board reports? All right, town manager's report.
Right, my report will be a little faster than mine. Staffing really hasn't changed, we still have the one police officer position that's open and all other positions are full, the one, a police assistant, as I told you last meeting, we're, we're not actively personing at this time. Whitney Hall Public Safety Building, the Whitney Hall slab pour was delayed. I'm gonna say rightfully so. The day before they were supposed to pour the slab, the project manager for Bread Loaf, out there, construction site manager, was cleaning up, getting ready, and saw a deficiency in the subgrade, there was a little bulge which would have made our slab too small. And so he did some measuring, figured out it was wrong and called off the troops and they spent the week, last week fixing it. So I told him, good catch, we're glad he did that. And so with that and the weather that we've had, the slabs been delayed, but it should be hopefully forged sometime this week when we get a little bit better weather. Carpentry is supposed to start soon, electric roughing has started, they've done some plumbing, below grade plumbing in the basement area, they've got a trench and got that done. So the, the work on Whitney Hall continues to move forward. M-FAC started the, I'm gonna say arduous task of picking colors for the exterior of the building. So I'm sure no matter what ends up getting picked, somebody's not gonna be happy. But we went through their filler palettes, we didn't love any of them, but we're making some recommendations. There's some siding colors and paint samples at Whitney Hall right now. The M-FAC committee members are continuing to come by and will continue working on that. That was a little harder than the public safety building. Public safety building's kind of in the same place it was, they're finalizing the, the GMP and the final pricing of the building based off the RFPs that they got, and we should be getting that soon. With that, on a public safety note, the Enfield Fire Department responded to 12 calls starting Thursday, April 4th until Sunday, April 7th. That was during the last bad storm that we had and had the power outages. I'd like to thank all the fire and police that were able to help out during that storm. During that call, one of the calls they had, the fire department responded to a mutual aid fire in Kenan. And Kenan expressed their thanks for our help during that time, especially when we were so busy. Just like to thank all the public safety crews and linemen and everybody else that worked tirelessly through that weekend to get people back up and running. I know I got one question on this from Kate, but the Main Street Grant that we're working on through the, I think it's federal highways or federal DOT, we're doing a Main Street visioning study through Upper Valley Regional Planning Commission, they're the ones that actually got the grant. But they're going to be doing pedestrian and bicycle access traffic loads. You'll see some traffic counts and pedestrian counts this summer. And they're really just envisioning streetscape and things that could make our downtown safer. So I'll get you guys a little bit more information on that when I get it. But they called, said this grant opportunity was available and they were willing to do the project and I told them, go. So we'll be doing a little bit more visioning downtown on what we can do to make it safer down there.
Okay.
Upper Valley Lake, Southern Regional Planning Commission is running it.
Great, thank you.
We'll be helping them a little bit.
That was part of the grant announcement today.
Yeah. Pretty sure that's what that was.
That was, we, there's a number of towns, so I just didn't know which pieces of the puzzle went together, thank you.
That's the only one I can think of that's out there that we're not actually running and managing.
Yeah.
I mean, a subrecipient grant to green.
Right, because there's only six regional ones in the United States and they got one of them, so.
So I updated a little bit last meeting with the RRFB, the Flashing Beacons by EBS. We've heard back from the state of New Hampshire DOT, or the crosswalks, and we're finalizing maintenance agreements right now. And another few loose ends, I signed a maintenance agreement contract with them and we're working on finalizing that paperwork. Talked to Jim and it looks like, once all the paperwork's in order, he'll be installing those probably not too long after school gets out, so they'll be in place before next year. So part of that's on our end, we don't want to be out there digging up all the schools out there and doing construction. So we'll do it during that timeframe. The one maintenance thing, but talking, I talked with Jim and the one maintenance thing we did have to kind of give up and give to the state was the painting of that crosswalk, what we are responsibility for now on. But speaking with Jim, we've had problems getting him to paint it, so this will be a little bit easier for us and a small amount of paint and a little bit of time. The byways grant, I've gotten a few questions on that. I just wanted to reiterate to the select board and the public that I'm working with Pathways Engineering and New Hampshire DOT on that byways trail grant. The timeframe the federal government had on that grant was extremely restrictive, so there's no way we're gonna get it constructed under this grant. But we're working hard to get it completely engineered so it's shovel ready for the next grant process that we go through. They knew the timeline was too tight when they offered us the grant. The federal government and state asked us to deny the grant because there was no way to get it done. But after talking with them and working through, we thought we could at least get it engineered and paid for. So we're gonna continue working on that. On the planning side of things, as I mentioned at the last meeting, there's a combined master plan, New Hampshire Hop Zoning Community Forum on May 9th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM and Saturday, May 11th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Both forums will be held at the Enfield Community Building to gather public input for those two projects. The master planning task force are fine tuning their feedback questions for that forum. So we're looking forward to that, they've met with all five related town committees and commissions and a lot of information's already been gathered for that. And then, as everybody probably knows, the ZBA held a continuance hearing for the Laramie Farms 300 unit housing complex up behind Jake's. The general public feedback that we've been getting is really mixed. There's, there's people on both sides of that, that issue, and the hearing has been continued to May 14th. Hopefully that's the, the final hearing and we'll know the outcome after the May 14th meeting. Not much on the DPW front, Water Department's flushing hydrants this week, so you may see them around flushing some hydrants, getting ready for, for summer. And then we did get news that FEMA approved our disaster request from the July storms of last year, so the town will be receiving $56,887.01 in reimbursement. So thank you to the police chief and the DPW crews that racked their time so diligently to help us get that reimbursement. And that's my town manager's report.
Am I correct in that our local roads are no longer posted?
They, if, I think they might still be posted, but they're about to be.
Those signs are gone, that's why I'm asking.
Then they're not posted.
Okay. The state is still posting Shaker Hill, however, the signs seem to be gone.
I know they were coming down really soon, so I didn't know they were down yet, but I knew it was imminent. The, the roads are in really good shape, the roster's gone, they've.
They are.
Done well, so.
Little work on Shaker Boulevard following, in parallel with their construction.
I have other questions for Ed.
Can you tell us, say one more time, what is the event on May 9th and 11th? Was it 9?
It's a community forum for community input on the master plan, the next five chapters and the zoning grant, so they're combined event just to get public feedback for those two projects.
So there's two and they'll be discussing the same thing?
Yeah.
Just two different opportunities?
Two opportunities.
What was the first date?
May 9th.
Thank you.
May 9th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM and Saturday, May 11th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
All right, on to business, starting with the electronic sign policy discussion. We went through this, the last one a few meetings ago. And I believe I'd made the changes that we requested. Any further comments on the electronic sign usage policy? Max?
I, I received a bit of feedback, I don't know what other folks got. And one of them, one part was a question about school events, using the sign, not school events taking place on the property, so I thought I would bring that forward. I don't have really strong feelings one way or another, I know there's a chance everyone's gonna want to use the sign, which is why we're looking at this policy. But there was an interest and I think there was a lot of chatter at one point about school organizations wanting to have access to the sign. I kind of feel like they probably could have their own sign, but. I don't know what you guys think.
I think keeping it simple is best. And the more organizations that get involved, the less simple it will be.
I think it's a living document and should we see issues in the future, we'll modify it accordingly.
Good point.
And the other item I got was a question on informational items. So for example, if Upper Valley Lake Center P Regional Planning Council had an upcoming hazardous waste event, would that be something that would go on the sign? This is a kind of question that I received and I.
I think if it ran, I would say if it ran through the town.
Ran through the town.
We do support the hazardous waste, so we could put that on there.
Some things, so Blue Collection, Blue Shot Clinic, these are a collaboration either with Public Safety or DPW.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any event the town was helping with or sponsoring with.
They'll have to choose to.
Yeah. I think that makes sense.
So would that include the form, candidate's form or not?
As long as it was help the community move.
Okay, that's it.
If we're happy with it as is, I believe we can move and adopt it.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The post? Have approved electronic sign policy. Okay, moving on to the Johnston Drive property lot six discussion. Do you want to take it off, Ed? I know we got, already sort of discussed a little bit of the result of what the planning board and the Conservation Commission did, but.
Yeah, we were, we were waiting for those two recommendations to come back. And during that timeframe, I contacted Mr. Barrows who had the first right of purchase on that. In discussion, he stated that at this time, they would not be interested in purchasing that property. So as I put in my, my notice, it was good to hear from him, but as we move forward, if we decide to move forward and sell this, then I will get a written agreement that he's passing on his first right of purchase. With that, I guess I'd like to just see what the board had to say, what, how they wanted to move forward. And if, at this time, if we wanted to move forward, we could move forward with a open option or RFE type process, whatever the board would like to do.
I guess I, I was a little confused because we got a letter from the Barrows and then they, they clearly changed their mind. And I, I didn't know if the decision by the Johnston Drive Property Use Committee to recommend selling lot six was largely contingent upon the fact that there was that existing right to purchase.
I don't believe it was, but they knew that that was a possibility at the time. The discussion in the Johnston Property Use Committee was almost selling those two lots off on the side was a compromise in a way between selling them all or keeping them all. So it's a discussion that we had, as you do see in your packet, I put some pictures on there. When the shed was there and the trees were in bloom the last time I was down there, it looked like a lot more of a separation now that the shed's gone and things have died back. It, it looks a lot more like one contiguous piece of property. Just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. You guys can, if there's a decision how you'd like to move forward.
How of access does that little piece of property have?
Pretty much none.
None.
To walk in.
Water and.
Okay.
Walk in, boat in, there's.
You don't have to cross somebody else's property to get.
No, you can take the rail trail down to it or go across town land.
Yeah.
But there is rail trail access up to.
It's just so, it's so tiny. Is it, I don't even, I don't know, I'm wondering if it's a good use of town time to value it. Like, is there a chance we're gonna net enough money to offset the amount of time we put into this? I.
No, I mean, so, so my view is that, and from talking to some folks in the committee, was that this was somewhat of a compromise amongst the committee members to create a, an overall recommendation. I, I stay in this, we should take the recommendation, they did a really good job, we should go through the process. I do think that this property is so unique that it's possible, we don't get attractive bids, but we won't know that until we try. So I think we should put out at least something of a, of a, at least do an RFE if not listed somehow to give people an opportunity to bid on it. Do it such that we have no obligation to sell, of course, because if it comes back at a hundred dollars, then we, that would change our thinking versus if somebody came back at a hundred thousand dollars. Those are two very different scenarios. And see what, see what happens. We should keep moving forward, the process is my view. But knowing that it's not.
And if it doesn't sell, we keep it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess that's, I'm fine with that, I just was wondering, you know, we have so many things going on in town, I worry that we're adding them.
I think we keep this one simple, so that it's not time consuming and, you know. That'd be my, go ahead, Dan.
RSA 4114A. Captain Select Board receives the recommendation of the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Heritage Commission, Heritage District Commission. The building lies within the defined district. Where such board commission exists, they shall hold two public hearings.
Yeah, we have that in our packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, that part, we know that.
Right. So you're talking at, at least six weeks out?
Yeah. Yeah, no, and there, and there's also rules about they have to be like within a certain period of time and then there's a certain.
And you can't vote until at least seven days after that.
Correct.
Yeah, that was, that's where my question about how much time in town.
Right, well, that's, that's what I'm saying, you got six weeks span.
Right.
I mean, you can still put the RFP out.
Right.
But you're not selling it until then, but. Which is not selling it until that, but.
And it may be that the results of come back in. We won't. Me too, but that that's the approach I think we should take. That's my my personal.
It seems like this is probably the most favorable time of year to do so.
It is, yeah.
Do we get an appraisal on this?
I wouldn't at this point. I would put it out, see what people offer and you guys.
Yeah.
Can decide if that's reasonable.
Is it like point oh nine acres? It's like ridiculously small.
It is, but it has frontage.
Yeah, about a hundred and thirty E P frontage.
All right, it's it's value is.
It is frontage. That's about all it is.
So on the R F P, I'm assuming like most of them, we you reserve the right to reject any and all.
Yes.
Yes. Yep, um like I bid a dollar and you can just say sorry, no.
No, exactly. If the bid came in at a dollar, we'd.
We love you.
I I can't say what we would do. We would almost certainly say no, but if you bid a million dollars, we would almost certainly say yes. I don't try it now. Right. Uh well, no, we gotta have a public hearings first.
And I just, the other thing before I forget, the private property that's currently located on the lot. Would that be told to be asked to be removed or removed?
Um I don't know if you guys have discussed that, but presumably, yeah.
Yeah, there's a table on there.
Yeah. Yeah, tables and maybe some chairs and.
I think that was removed for D E S, I think you had to get it out of.
I mean, we can just mirror the last two R F Ps. We did those had great.
Yeah, I'll bring them down a little bit. This one's gonna be really simple and open and I can make it a little bit more clear that we'll. Decide whether we are or not gonna sell it based on the proposals that come in.
Yeah.
But I think we can go concurrent with the request to the various committees to review.
Yeah.
So that we can see.
We already did review.
No, Johnston.
It's already been.
We already did it.
No, I mean, as a as a solicitation.
Planning Board and Conservation already did, yeah.
Oh, no, I know they did their review, but.
You're talking about public hearings?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do public hearings while it's out.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, I think.
Okay.
Do you need anything? Might as well, so we'll go forward.
Need a motion.
R P R P together, simple one and we'll do the public hearings. You wanna start scheduling those?
I think so, the next two meetings. I think the next two meetings are fun.
Yeah, let's do that.
I mean, it'll be in the paper before then, so it'll pique some interest among some folks.
We'll get it out pretty soon.
You too could have your very own paddling triangle.
Maybe a ferry company could come in, you know.
Okay, if there's nothing else there, we can move on to Shed Street Property Discussion.
Why don't we schedule the same two hearings?
Yep, so this is in a similar spot where. We need to schedule a couple of public hearings. And before we can move forward, we're gonna potential sale. I think the next two meetings are fine and non-named.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
Many wanna look at the calendar on um. Your second meeting may not be within the ten to fourteen days, actually may be longer than fourteen days.
I don't think so, because this is our second meeting.
First one in May.
Next is the first of May.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because this is already the second meeting, grateful.
Okay. However, there's a holiday in May.
And our meetings before.
Which is, no. What? So that normally the meeting would be on the sixth and the twentieth, but because the holidays on the twentieth, it's the sixth and the twenty first.
Holidays the twenty seventh.
Yeah.
The holidays the twenty seventh?
Yep.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry. I'm getting my. I was thinking President's Day, which we February don't.
Yeah.
You could extend.
Yes, yeah, no, I'm I'm positive, but I I fly, I have to travel for work too.
Yeah.
So I've had this in my head for like three days as I figured that out.
Those will work.
Yeah, yeah, so that would be May sixth and May twentieth.
Why don't we have?
Well, Memorial Day.
That's the next week.
But it it, yeah, it's the last of.
But while you're at it, Memorial Day on your calendar, so you can go hang out downtown.
So I would recommend a similar process. Uh placed in the paper and. Boom, boom.
Do we wanna give us of a show while we're on it?
Yeah. Where's my rubber stamp?
Yep, yeah.
That's gonna go to planning and.
So what?
Conservation.
Yeah, I wanna reread and look at the timeframe because it already has.
Yeah.
Once.
In fact, that's how conservation, that's not doubt about it, to create the original warrant article.
Conservation did, but I don't believe it's ever been planned.
Okay, I wasn't. It went to the planning board. And heritage and it went to.
Okay.
I wasn't on the board then.
But anyways, you'll double check it when you check in the timing anyways.
We can double check that.
Whether it was discussed or not.
Well, we can. Well, either way, there's time to read now in those public hearings that the planning board needs to have it on their agenda. We can we can make it happen. So let's just check with Rob and make sure we we get it.
Well, definitely, piquing the interest of a Valley News reporter with three properties on.
I was gonna say three.
Well, three three.
Yeah, we usually do them together. They go bang, bang, bang.
We're gonna go bang, bang, bang.
Yeah, bang, bang, bang.
Yeah, we've already, people have already done the body of their arguing, this is. They could do it again and again.
Okay, so we will have three public hearings at the next two meetings and you'll double check. That the proper like that for John for Methodist Hill, the planning board and.
Yeah, I'll look at the yeah, I mean of it.
Yeah.
If there's times put on it, or maybe we'll just send it out again to everybody and say.
Yep.
Okay. And in terms of Methodist Hill timing, did that clock, did the clock start yet on the redemption, the final redemption chance?
Sent the letter out last week.
Okay.
So. And I did get contacted by their attorney. Who's working on their redemption, so that might actually happen, but we'll see.
And then we just can't see the public hearing if they redeem it.
If they redeem it and before then, until we have money in hand, it's not.
Okay, anything else on those three properties? Now we will, then you're moving to Mascoma Lakeside Park R F P Awards for parking and landscaping. This is the next step in the plan was put together at least a year ago.
Yeah, the plan was put together. It was approved by the select vote, I believe, last April. It was April, May timeframe, so about a year ago, it was approved to go ahead and get this engineer to get it moving forward for construction. As you guys know, we got a land and water conservation fund grant for this, so we're kind of working under grant guidelines and. On our R F P process and all those things to make sure it's done. Um I did put the two R F Ps out. Um as you see in your packet, we had bids more than three bids for both of these, three or more, I should say. Um on the parking lot one was really straightforward. I recommend awarding the parking lot R F P to Kurtzall Excavation for a cost not to exceed a hundred and seventy eight thousand two oh four thirteen. I did write the motion um authorizing me to enter into a contract with them instead of awarding the contract. Because I'm gonna be working with both these contractors, trying to get the pricing down. Um for a little bit over the budget for the Mascoma Lakeside Park Committee, so I wanna talk to the committee and talk to the. Who's the contractors before awarding them, but if you authorize me to enter that contract for an award, then we can move the project forward.
How much is the grant?
Um the grant's a hundred and twenty five thousand with, and it's fifty percent grant, so we have two hundred and fifty thousand. They have a little bit more money than that that nobody can count to to work with, but we'll be we'll be working under those funds to get this. Move forward. Um while I'm talking, I've done some calling the vendors and talking back and forth. With it and with the, you know, the rules of the R F P moving forward. I recommend awarding the landscape trail improvements to C Small Property Services in the amount not to exceed ninety nine thousand five oh five. As seen on your your brick spec. I wanted a little more time for that because the the way the bids came in, some of, I have a whole bid sheet with. Pricing for each and every tree and everything and. Their price for trees was way less than everybody else's and so I was getting concerned about are we are we looking apples to apples? But we are, they just, they did labor a little bit different. They added them into different places in the in the bid sheet, so. Um talking through the two lowest bidders on that process, I talked through them on how they're planting trees. What are they planning to do? And it's pretty much the same in fact process, so.
And we have the appropriate tree warranties.
Yeah, we have one year warranty from the nursery and workmanship from the contractor.
I'd make a motion to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with Kurtzall Excavation. For the parking lot project at Mascoma Lakeside Park for the amount not to exceed one hundred seventy eight thousand two hundred four dollars and thirteen cents. With funds coming from the Mascoma Lakeside Park Trust Fund and hereby further authorize the town manager. Or they're designated to take such actions and execute all documents as may be necessary.
Sure. Further discussion. Yes, David.
Mentioned as a as a member of that committee that it's over budget. How much over budget are we?
I don't have the number exactly and I'm working with the contractors right now to bring the prices down.
Okay.
So we'll be talking about that. I wrote to you today to see if we can follow meaning to discuss that. And that's why I worded the motions the way they were. They're not awarding the contract to these people. They're authorizing me to enter the contract.
Okay.
Just mostly out of time constraints.
Yeah.
Where is C Small Property Service from? I don't know that firm.
They're coming out of Parkin.
Harlem.
And you have all their references and everything.
Yeah.
Got me up it up.
Anything else on the first one, the motion we have on the table, which is for the uh. The result exhibition, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 opposed? Okay, we we've done the first one and then the landscaping one, I would entertain a motion for that.
I enter, I make a motion to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with C Small Property Services. For the landscape and trail improvement project at Lakeside, Mascoma Lakeside Park. For an amount not to exceed ninety nine thousand five hundred five dollars and ten cents. With funds coming from the Mascoma Lakeside Park Trust Fund and hereby further authorize the town manager or they're designated to teach. Take such actions and execute all documents as may be necessary.
I'll start him up.
Further discussion of landscaping, Tom, thanks. Seeing all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so it's needed that. All right, moving on, award elevator contract.
This can be a little bigger discussion.
Yeah.
As you guys may remember, we signed a Whitney Hall contract by, we got it down to budget. By removing the elevator contract, we had a discussion at that time that if we went out for the elevator contract, we would save a little bit of money. Because we wouldn't have the markup. Bread loaf. All knowing that even a one dollar R F P back would be over budget. So um we went ahead and put the R F two out. Um it was estimated by Bread Loaf to be a hundred and forty five thousand dollars. And we got the R F P back last week. It was a hundred and thirty four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So a little bit over ten thousand dollars cheaper than what was estimated. As I put in that packet and I put the letter in there from you, um we still have twelve thousand dollars in the budget for funds. Which we've already purchased. There's a contingency of fourteen thousand dollars that we don't know how much of that will use. But we try to keep it down to a minimum. A hundred and twenty thousand dollars for furniture, which seems really high for what I think we actually need to replace. And then um being conservative, out of that money, I think there'll be about eighty thousand dollars to help with the refer refurbishment. Which will leave about fifty four thousand seven fifty that we would need to manage out of the project or find in some other kind of funding. With that, I'll put the disclaimer, but that's. That's all out there to be. Part of the project, so it may or may not come to fruition. There's a possibility we could have to on this whole thing, but. I think there's a a good possibility we could manage down and have to wait for a smaller portion. But it's something that we. We need to discuss. I do think it's something that we need to do if we're building this building. I think the last thing we wanna do is have a. An old elevator that's not working very good in a new building. Decision that we're gonna have to make.
I mean, this elevator has been a nightmare since the first day we put it. We put it in the wrong spot. We destroyed part of the stage. They did the building around it wrong. We can't not do this elevator like I honestly, I've never seen a bigger debacle. Out of one single thing we did for idiot clients. It's just an ongoing nightmare since what the mid late nineties. So um I think we have to do it. I just, I can't wrap my brain around this, the whole. Like the library has money. I know that they promet made certain promises. I donated myself, but where is their money getting used? Like, it's not ours, but are they buying their own furniture or are we gonna have to buy them some furniture too? Because they're quoting out like shelving and, you know. Where is all this money going?
I think they're buying part of that and the other thing that they told me and that they've been putting is that it's to go to lower the amount of the loan. Not to lower or not to add to the cost of the project, but. They did, if you guys remember, in the first one, they did authorize a hundred and sixty thousand something. To pay the actual overage of what the budget came in at.
Hundred and sixty four thousand fifty dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, and I realize we're in an extraordinary inflationary period for construction. I mean, no construction goes up, but not like this. I just, you know, we're. Really scraping and trying hard and we knew it was gonna be tough. I just am like, if we have to buy a lot of furniture. For any reason, it's really, it, like I look at the school districts, like they kept some of their old furniture and it looks trashy. I'm gonna just call it like it is. It's not nice, but you take a brand new building and then you take things that are old and half broken and you put it in and people. Just it it's not gonna be as bad because you're not dealing with children twenty four seven, but I think, you know, it says a lot to outfit something with old. Like I would not wanna see like this be your conference room table. So I guess I I'm just very nervous about counting on the furniture money.
We have twelve thousand dollars that we can use from not having purchased telephones. We have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars if we completely eliminate the furniture budget. And we take twenty seven hundred and fifty dollars of the fourteen thousand dollar contingency, that equals a hundred and thirty four thousand seven fifty. Now, to begin to build back the potential furniture fund, we also have fourteen thousand seven hundred nine dollars in the municipal facilities and equipment capital reserve fund.
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
We dissolve that one?
Yeah.
It's all.
It's gone.
Okay, then we start from scratch and we solicit pledges for furniture.
I I think that's that's dangerous. I I tend to agree that um to put in second rate furniture into what we think is gonna be. A a really outstanding building is just not a good plan.
And I guess my other question is, like, we know this elevator is part of the project, but if we separate it for the project, this is just me. Not understanding, does it go to C I P? Is this, I mean, I just wanna make sure we're doing this process in a way that.
Personally, I recommend with this information that we move forward and we. Award the elevator bid and we get this moving. We manage the project tightly. We do what we can do and we make those types of decisions when we're coming to the end if we need. Well, money, we need to figure it out, but until then, or same with the furniture, do we take the furniture fund? Do we not? I think you do that when you find out if you have to pay a hundred and thirty. Now, when you're getting ready to award it.
How are we, the three phase power, do we have any money? We have to invest in that to bring it?
We have that, that should, that's. We have that, that should, that's budgeted in the budget.
Okay.
Now, as of right now, all the numbers we have, it fits within the budget that we we have put forward.
Cause I see, you know, I think three phase power and retrofitting this elevator with three phases is a a very good decision. I just. I get very nervous. I mean, I guess we could say, hey, you're all sitting on the floor and singing kumbaya until we put in the budget the following year for furniture. That's our other option. But I I do, I did listen to people, you know, with the concerns about finances, and I wanna make sure that we're. Really thinking about it, but also not shortchanging the town on. Yeah. It's a tough thought.
I think the bulk of it comes from, in essence. Using the furniture allocation that's within the budget. And we'll deal with where that money is. Replaced at a future point. Hopefully, within this. Construction process, of course.
Yeah, and we're, I mean, we're pushing for them not to spend their contingency as well, so if we can. Manage the project down and come in under budget, we're gonna, but you never know when you're dealing with a project like we have.
That's right.
We are, not that there won't be change orders in the past, but. We're pretty much coming out of the ground, the building's demolished. I think a lot of the unknowns that we run into have been discovered. And we haven't had a lot of those, so moving forward, it's just managing the day to day and seeing if we can, we can. Get a little extra money here or there.
So like when they found, for example, it was last week when they didn't pour and they found something that needed to be corrected. How does that get built through, right? So like in a private project, I'm like, I'm not paying for that, take it off my bill. Um, how does that come down the pipeline in a project?
We'll manage some of that out, and some of that was the subcontractor saying this is how much we'll do it for. I'm sure. In their behind the scenes, they had a little bit of a contingency for an hoop and stuff too, but. Yeah, they put in a bid that I will pour the slab for this much money, and that's what they'll pour the slab for, and if we see anything. That doesn't look right, we'll definitely be calling that out. We've caught a few things here and there.
Yeah, and I'm just twitchy because Enfield, uh, Enfield's, um, Village School had a very severe problem, and then the contractor basically went bankrupt. And so the reason you go in and it has this weird rise is because they made a really big mistake, so. It's not that I don't trust our people, it's just that we've seen in this community what happens. Um, and I I'm glad we have someone watching it, and I'm glad they caught it. I just, I get very nervous about getting into the contingency with early on.
There were a couple of major phases, I believe, that they haven't finalized pricing on, that is still out there for competitive pricing, such as the roofing.
No, we have a roofing.
We have the roofing price established.
Yeah, they have it, and when we saw, you know, we signed a contract with them for maximum price.
It's a not to exceed price, that's right.
Even if it goes over, we don't exceed that, they they paid it. So we have a not to exceed price. That was slightly over budget, covered by the library. This is over and above that, but, you know, we're. We're working hard, um, Scott, who we hired to help on our side, the owner's rep is. Pick and steering every bill that comes in and every piece of equipment on site to make sure that it's needed. Like I said, we. We've caught a few things. I don't wanna make it sound like Red Lob's doing anything, but we've caught a few things where we've saved a few thousand dollars here and there. Asked them to get equipment off the site that wasn't necessary or not completely necessary. They thought it was needed, but. Told them it wasn't, and. So little things to try to save money everywhere we can, and he understands and they understand that we're. We're a little over budget and we're trying to pull it back under budget, so.
And you're satisfied that. The other couple of elevator contractors were not going to follow through. There was no one that called up last minute and said, give us another day or something like that.
No, they had plenty of opportunity to do something. They didn't, um. I'm under the understanding now that there were a handful. At most, of contractors out there, and they've all pretty much been purchased by two companies, so. You may get three bids, but it's two companies bidding.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with Stanley Elevator for an amount not to exceed a hundred thirty-four thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. And to further authorize the town manager or their designees to complete all actions and sign all documents that may be needed.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, disbandment of committees, Johnston Property and Methodist Health Property Use Committees. Uh, this is more of a formality, both those committees did an excellent job and.
The next item is Whitney Hall Contract.
Oh, yeah.
That's part, that's the international.
Well, that's just the informational item that wasn't a discussion.
Okay.
We already did that.
Yeah. That was, that was, uh. There was information that I thought was supporting the elevator, RFP.
No, thank you.
No, because it includes, that discussion includes all of the, um. Money from the trustees of the library.
This is from a higher.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I wanted to give you the issue of why we made the decision we made.
You know, it might help as I think that dates, I was just thinking.
We, I think Alice, we've given Ed. Further clarification on how he's to proceed in terms of paying for the contract and things to look out for as the construction continues. Opportunities to recoup the money for the elevator, for example, so he has some paths that he can follow.
I'll make a motion to disband the Johnston Property Use and Methodist Health Property Use Committees and thank those who served on each of these committees for their time and work. On behalf of the town.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Committees are disbanded with tremendous gratitude. They both did great work for the town.
Yes.
Appointments to boards and committees and assistant town clerk.
So you can have a list of all of the, um, positions that are vacant. Some of them are the the individuals, all the individuals who were serving and had their terms coming up. Were notified by email so that they could input in an application for reappointment. Some we have not heard from. I can send out a reminder notice to them again. I did, um. I don't know what Lee Davis's, um, intention is for the Conservation Commission. I've not heard anything from her.
She's definitely planning on hanging out with us. She made plans to do the market and stuff, so, um, she did write to her email or?
I did, and I also followed that up, saying that because we didn't have an application for this meeting, that she would not be, um. Her term would expire before the next conservation meeting, and I copied the chair of the commission. So, and I haven't heard from anyone.
I have a question on the second page, um, Eric. Under rifling, your committee name is cut off, and I'm just wondering what it is.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Under Recreation.
It is cut off. That is.
Oh, that's.
That's two.
Yeah, that's. That's tax increment.
So trustee of trust funds, didn't we just vote somebody in?
Yes, but it was not what she thought it was, and she has already resigned.
Yes.
Okay, I did not follow along with that one, clearly.
I mean, I was a little caught off guard when, cause I did.
We did advertise that they, all of these were available, yes, except for trustee of trust funds, which I just met up.
Right.
So that will be going out soon. But if you know anybody who might be interested, have to fill out an application. Um, in addition to all of these people who are currently serving and have either said yes or no. Or I've not heard from mine, which is fine, um, Meredith has submitted an application for the Heritage Commission. So she's considering new application. You should have received her application, but she's not on the list of all the colors.
Yeah, so the, the, and there is a vacant spot, so that. Problem, and then we have Shirley Green for Mascoma Lakeside Park Committee. Uh, Bradley Rich for reappointment for the planning board. Uh, Bruce Bergeron for the Tax Increment Finance Board, and Linda Jones for Heritage Commission.
You should have seen, had something from Tim Jennings.
Oh, there's some on the back, sorry. Here we have Dr. Dupay for. I'll do the back sides now. Shirley Green, uh, for Old Home Days. And Tim Jennings for Planning Board. And yes, Linda Jones again for the Scenic Byway Advisory Board. And I think those are all.
I'll make a motion to appoint the boards and committees as printed with the addition. Of Meredith Smith to Heritage. Cause that's the one that was written, right?
She, she is in the.
Yeah, it's just she's not in the, so we'll add.
Okay. Second. I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, and there are still plenty of vacant positions if anybody's looking for further. Volunteer worker knows anyone.
I'll make a motion, um, we appoint. Jerusha Howard. To fill the vacancy as assistant town clerk, but we need a motion for that, I'm assuming. I just thought she'd be done separately.
Yeah, what?
And she's been performing this job anyway, hasn't she?
She's the deputy tack collector, but this wouldn't allow her to do town clerk work as well.
But she's been doing town clerk work, but not officially.
Not officially.
Not official.
But first, is there a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, now we'll have discussion.
No discussion, nice to see.
Yeah, this will allow her to learn how to do car registration, those types of things, and handwork elections, whatever she decides.
Cause Daisy.
Primarily intended to be for election work.
Yeah.
And it allows for redundancy within the town offices where her skills. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations to Jerusha. It will be great work for her. Okay. Acceptance of donation to Community Nursing Fund in the amount of one hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion that we accept the donation with thanks.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, that'd be to. Val Estenson. Okay, now we are on to, uh, RSA. Ninety-one A review. Ed, you wanna give us a little spiel on?
Yeah, you should have a packet in front of you, um. After Town Union, talking with Eric, just wanted to to kind of go through some of the the stuff that we go through with. With new committee members and ask the committees to, and commissions to follow. Now, the first page is just reorganizing the board. Uh, we do make a a recommendation to all of our board. As the select board does to to rotate the chair position and those things as possible, so we don't have the same person doing it year after year, that is. Nice to to rotate those around. It's not a mandate, but it is a recommendation that we vote forward.
I think it might have just been in the packet online, huh?
Yeah, I.
Yeah, but it, it, she dropped. And it looks like, and the heritage.
Basically.
Up here it is, okay.
Everything we do here is what we provide to generic for all the new board and committee members. I did not print the entire right to manual, but.
Yeah.
But I gave you the table of contents groups, so you know what's in there, but the electronic version was complete. I did get this all posted on our website, along with, um, something that is specific and additional for the budget committee, so there's. Things that, you know, recommended policies that they can read that are on our website and stuff.
But really with that, I'm not gonna go through this entire packet with you, but, um, you know, some of the things that we try, and I've gone to multiple meetings now to talk to people. I'm gonna be going to the Conservation Commission at the next meeting to talk, you know, just about some of the basics of. You know, what is a quorum? A quorum is the members, the, you know, a majority of the seated member. Of the board, so, you know, we had a little problem with that with the rec commission. They lost. A member and they thought their quorum still needed to be of the full amount of seats. It's actually the seated member, so if they have three missing people on their board. On a five-member board, they can have two as the forum at that time until they get some more members. Um, another thing that we really talk about a lot is electronic communication, but, you know. Please try not to email the entire. Board something and like sending information, especially if you're mailing back and forth, that breaks the open meeting law. A single. I will put it out there, a single putting it out of, hey, you guys read this article or something, it's not breaking the open meeting law, but if someone writes back and says. Oh, that's a good article, that'll support what we're trying to do on the Johnston Beach or something, then you just cross the line, so. We really ask that you send staff those emails, and then we can distribute them in a way, hopefully. I've been trying to preach to staff, to DCC everybody, so if you do accidentally hit reply out, it only goes to the one person that sent it to you. But, um, so that, you can look at that. The one thing that the open meeting law does allow is. Um, conversation or email if you're trying to. Set a meeting time, those types of things. Again, just in the effort of transparency, we try to. Try to have staff help with that, so it's not the boards emailing each other and and just. It's used to having that back and forth conversation, but you're allowed to set meetings, plan. Those types of things, as long as you're not discussing the actual action.
And as long as we're not not emailing a quorum of the board, we're okay.
You are, but you gotta be really careful with that. The one thing that you can break the law is, and you actually see this more not on email, but in person. Is, um, sequential. So if you talk to Tracy, and then you talk to Eric, and then you talk to Alice about the same subject matter. You just had a.
That's very tricky.
Yeah, so you really should try not to, I mean, I tell people we're in a small town, so it's really hard, but. Try not to discuss select board stuff outside of the select board meeting, but, you know, sometimes you run into each other and you go, oh, what about that meeting? And you talk, but try not to, try to be really careful about going to other ones. If it's non-substantial, if it's not about what you're talking about, technically you did not break the law, so, you know, if you. You know, talk about, I don't know what. I'm not gonna be at this meeting in this state, then you go tell someone else you're not really breaking the law that way, but, you know, if you're. You're talking about, hey, what do you think we should do with that Johnston property, then you are, and the attorney general and Eric can speak to this one too, but his. When he breaks it down and talks about it, it's, what is, what is the intention of the discussion? And I think you guys can all. Really look at that, you know, the straight face test. Are you trying to figure out what people are gonna vote and how we're gonna do something? Or is it just, hey, what do you think about that discussion we had the other night? That's two completely different discussions, but we try to err. Almost on the side of being too safe, the. Run everything through staff, we can, we can send those forward, and it just, it breaks the accidental, oh, man, I didn't really mean to do that. Or get into that conversation. And if it starts to happen, say, we'd say I emailed you and I CC'd instead of V-seed, and you start to do it, I should be on that chain too to go, whoa, stop. And so that's really why we do that, um, the sequential talking, I think gets a lot of people and. And so that's really why we do that. Um, the sequential talking, I think gets a lot of people and.
Is there a recommendation on members of one board attending meetings for another board as private citizens?
Hmm, they can do that. Um, you need to be careful how you do it. Um, we actually had that at the Budget Committee where we had three members of the select board at a Budget Committee meeting. I talked to the attorney, that's a hundred percent okay. They can give their opinions, that's a hundred percent okay. They shouldn't be discussing among each other or giving recommendations as a select board.
I think the thing you can do that's okay is agree that you're going to kick it to the next meeting. That's allowable, right?
Yeah.
You can, you can not, you're not saying we're going to make a decision of X, Y, Z. You're saying this needs to be a discussion at the next meeting.
Yeah, and you should probably let your board rep just say that, that's representative of that board. If there isn't a board rep, then yeah, one of you can say, you know, for me to make sure that I can put on that meeting agenda. Keep it short and sweet. I mean, that, again, you're not discussing the options, so you're not breaking the law, but perception is also part of this and we just need to be a, a lord of the much. But, you know, again, we're a small town. We have people on a lot of boards.
Right.
They do not give up their rights to be a citizen and attend any meeting at any time.
I made the suggestion to Conservation, because they have a lot of things that they'd like to be able to go to. It might be a trail walk. Or I said, if you think for one minute you might want to add on, you're gonna, just post it. Just post it. It can be, your agenda item can be trail walk with upper valley, whatever, right? Trail line.
Yeah. And the minutes can be.
We went for a walk and.
We adjourned at this time, we walked this trail, we adjourned. If there is a discussion that happens, then you can put that in there, but.
And I think as a good practice, um, even when you have a meeting like that, uh, it's good to not take votes, right? Or may come to any kind of consensus that can, other than like, that's a nice flower.
Again, we just did that. We invited the planning board to come to the housing discussion. Well, technically by the letter of the law, we did not have to form that as a planning board meeting. Because they weren't having a meeting, they weren't having discussion about zoning or any of those things. But it's best to put it on the agenda that they've been invited in a quorum of the planning board by the tax.
My understanding that the chair of a committee or a board can act similarly to what staff, um, does as well.
As long as they're not entering into discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but my, my understanding that it's an organizational role.
Right.
They can disseminate information. Anybody can technically disseminate information. It's the back and forth is when you start breaking.
It's a better practice to have that in your staff.
Send it to a staff or to the chair.
So if the chair of the board talked to a few other members about something that was coming up, if it got into anything substantial, they still.
They will still be.
That's why I, as a practice, have always gone to Ed more and said, but like, hey, do you want to send this around?
So yeah, organizing a meeting, doing any of that. If there's not a staff contact, which there should be for every board now. The chair is the one that's supposed to do that, but, you know, since I've been here, we put a staff representative for every board. So we have somebody you can run into.
Yeah, and I, I think we've made some good improvements by making sure every board has the staff point of contact. Putting this stuff together is great. It's certainly better than when I started voluntarily to town and providing it to new volunteers and, um, I think that, uh, that this board should have it at the first, should just include this basic discussion at the first meeting after every town meeting. Um, uh, just as the other boards do, so. Uh, are there other questions? I also encourage everybody to read it, kind of does on the website, because it's interesting.
Yeah. I think that for me, I just want to say thank you because I've been asking for years for this. Um, and a lot of the challenges we've had on conservation have been related to the kind of issue and trying to explain it. Um, I encouraged, I wrote and asked, um, the chair and the staff contact to see if they could circulate an offer to go to one of these ninety-one A things too, if somebody needed it. Because I think some of what we've done in the past, we haven't been very heavy on training our folks, so this is a big step in the way to. Thank you for volunteering to come to that.
Yeah.
It will help you a lot.
It's a lot easier for me to attend a meeting for a half hour and talk about this than to deal with the repercussions of things going on.
And also having the resources readily available, making people know, this is right here. This is how you find it. If you have questions, ask.
Yeah, the other thing we've had issues with that really doesn't fall into ninety-one A, and we haven't had problems on this board, thankfully, but just be careful if you're talking with or writing letters to people outside of our organization. If you sign it, Eric Russell, select board member, select board chair, it gets interpreted as this is the select board writing this letter. So
Yeah.
unless the select board's discussed it and made a motion or that, you should just, if you want to write a letter supporting legislation or whatever you're doing, leave your title off, leave the fact that you're in on the select board off unless we've discussed it here.
Can I just ask that we, again, do all of the new people and the newcomers reemphasize the minutes rule in terms of turning the minutes in? Um, I don't, I, I don't know if this sheet is being replicated for each member of our various boards, but.
Yeah, that's what they.
Um, I, I'd like to emphasize that top line that's on that minutes page.
I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that we have limited amount of human capital, so you're not gonna have minutes appear out of the ether if we have nobody physically present. Like I took draft ones the other day for conservation, um, and I printed draft their notes, they're not minutes. And I took a really, I mean, they're like ugly to help out, but it's, they meet the minimum legal requirements, but you don't want to use them to make decisions.
And that's a big difference. Again, a lot of our minutes go way above the minimum required.
Exactly.
And we, you know, we always have them ready and we can make them available within the timeframe, but we, we often try to make them a lot prettier and a lot more substantial, and sometimes that takes a little bit of time.
And we have the ability now to record so many of our meetings, it's simply not necessary to.
The recordings are posted almost immediately.
It's just not necessary to write everything down in terms of having them there in the five-day timeline.
It is.
It's really helpful when you're.
I mean, they can be brief and they can be summarized.
Yeah.
And if you are interested and need that further detail, talk to the all.
I think for me, um, I will look in the minutes for topics, so I can figure out where in the meeting it happens, so I can go watch it if I need it. So it's one of those, like, it's good to have the kind of brief synopsis. Um, and when I say that I took really ugly minutes, you literally got like topic, name a person talking, not a description, not anything they said, like so-and-so came, they said a few words, and then if there was a motion, there's nothing about what they said, right? Because that meets the minimum legal requirements. You don't want those for your minutes.
We have excellent minutetakers. I think there's tremendous value in that.
Tremendous.
But Tracy's right, we.
I'm only referring to the committees that don't have the advantage of professionalism.
And we do need to make sure we're, uh, punctual with getting that minutes soon available. Anything else on RSA ninety-one A? Questions, comments? I think it's, it's a really nice step forward.
Yeah.
Creating, you know, as part of having a packet for volunteers, which makes it easier for volunteers as well and presumably things will be added over the years and.
Um, keep a topic for annual review, as you said.
Right. And so we will move on to policy review.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yep.
Is this being shared with all of the groups or is it our responsibility to take these charge groups and share it with them?
We can send it to all the groups. We usually give it to new members, but we should be sending it in the beginning of every year to the board and committees during.
At least to the chair.
Yeah, more boards and committees make their own decision. My, my recommendation would be that the first meeting where they're reorganizing after a town meeting, this would be an agenda item for every board committee.
And I would.
Everybody has their opportunity to ask questions and learn a little bit.
I would say in where this is new, not ninety-one A is not new, but this practice is. Um, given the number of boards that have people who just simply don't have all this background, it'd be good.
Yeah, I'm surprised even the old Home Days Committee has to adhere to these standards.
Maybe town board.
You make decisions, you make them in front of the public.
Yeah.
And because this is all online, I will probably just email people saying, this is where you can find it and read it, instead of sending out.
Oh, yeah, people should definitely be directed, I, I think every member of every board should fit that link at the beginning of every, I guess after town meeting. That'd be my suggestion. Okay. Onto policy reviews. We have before us tonight, the capital reserve policy, the debt management policy, fraud policy, undesignated fund policy, investment policy, and post issuance tax compliance policy. Um, I don't believe there are any proposed changes at this point, so we can run through them one at a time.
I actually have one thing that I would like to do with all of these and just replace part of select, select board throughout each and each.
Yep.
And there was, and I don't recall which one that, but there might have been one or possibly two that didn't have the line annual review required. If you could just confirm it, that each of them should say that somewhere.
The ones that are. They don't.
Well, I, I mean, I, I think we as a policy should have it there. That each of these should be annually reviewed and they don't all, I'll, I'll say it as part of the policy.
I, I don't, so typically boards don't do that unless you have one that really needs it. You probably shouldn't do that because you should be on a cycle of reviewing policies that don't require an annual review. And then the ones that require annual, obviously you do. So they're already stated, um, unless you have a reason to review them. I, I guess my one thing I would like to see is on the ones that do require annual review that we, um, maybe vote to reaffirm each year. I don't know how you guys feel. Or annotate it somehow that it was reviewed. Um, the school board does that and it's nice then you know you put eyes on it.
We have been doing that.
Yeah, I saw that you had on most of them, yeah, but I like that.
Starting to do that. If there are no other changes, you can't make a motion to reaffirm these as a group instead of one of them. And then these ones will be coming to you every year.
Yeah, right.
We'll probably bring them to you as a model.
Do you want a motion on that?
Yeah.
My move that we, uh, reaffirm uh, as follows, the capital reserve policy, the debt management policy, the fraud policy, the undesignated fund policy, the investment policy, and the post issuance tax compliance policy for two thousand and twenty-four this date.
With the one change of.
With the one change of noting wherever it says select board be changed to.
Where the select men be changed.
Where it says select men be changed to select board.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion?
I just have a question.
Yeah.
Where are we in the six-year capital improvement plan?
It gets updated every year to a six-year plan. It, it's a rolling six-year.
And it's a big document, it's not small. So each department has their piece of, I might actually really like to see that process. Very interesting.
In September, when the CIP begins to meet, they get the rolling plan, which shows the recommendations and requests for the current year as well as the succeeding six-year period.
Select year was twenty-three to twenty-nine, but next year will be twenty-four to thirty.
So like previous discussions about CIP are coming together like little pieces.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a rolling look into the future and planning process.
Okay.
But it may be appropriate that as it is given to the CIP, that the select board perhaps should get a copy.
They get a copy.
Has it at the initiation of the meeting?
I think we have.
It's the summary, right, that we get?
Yeah, and I think you get it a little closer towards the end of the, the plan as it's getting close to being finalized. So this is the plan and.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did you have anything that you want to say?
I think it's right on the website.
Well, that, that includes the current year plan.
Yeah.
Not the whole thing.
Right, doesn't have the six-year.
A happy extension of six-year plan. It's nice for the.
Discussion of that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Reaffirmed. Policies. Administrative items. We have an intent to excavate.
I just have one clarification on that, mostly for the public. The intent to excavate from Conkey is for the pit that he's been running for years, not a new piece of property.
What new piece of property did he purchase?
He purchased one down at the farm in DeBogro that used to be the great pit and he wanted to expand it and it was a big controversial hearing. So I just want people to know it's not that pit that he's asking for the intent to add.
It was like, long enough ago that I was the, one of my students on planning board.
I thought someone was going to put a horse facility on, on the old creek that they're going to and they decided not to.
Ah. Okay. I always thought that was sort of a strange. Okay. Um, other business, uh, public comments. There, need a public comment this evening?
Brother.
Okay. Uh, let's see, none? We can go on. We do have a non-public session uh, for review of applications for the Emergency Services Advisory Committee. I don't believe there's anything else that needs to be done before that. Entertained a motion to go into non-public session for RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two C. Uh, review of applications for Emergency Services Advisory Committee.
So moves.
Second. We need a roll call for this, right?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
From non-public now.